All right, good evening and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council for Monday, May 16th at 7:00. My name is William Wutz. I'm president of council. I will lead us in the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Please stand up. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day. Lord, as we enter into the Memorial Day season, we are grateful for those people that have gone before us and have laid down their lives for the freedoms that we enjoy today. Lord, be with this council as we discuss and discern the things for our community that we wish we would have done. Lord, give us a sense of wisdom and grace and kindness for the least and the last and the lost. Amen.
(Inaudible) America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll this evening?
Mrs. Snee. Mr. Schilling.
Present.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Severt.
Present.
Mr. Pierce.
Present.
Mrs. Marshall.
Here.
Mr. Whitten.
Move to excuse Ms. Snee.
Second.
It's been moved to excuse Mrs. Snee by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Excuse.
Move to excuse Mr. Whitten.
Second.
It's been moved to excuse Mr. Whitten by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the summary of the minutes of the May 2nd, 2022 meeting of Troy City Council?
Minutes of council, May 2, 2022. Public hearings were held on the rezonings covered by ordinances number O-16, 2022, and O-17, 2022. Committee reports. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended legislation be prepared approving an SPD loan to fermentum enterprises. Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing new moratorium related to demolitions in the downtown historic district. Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing acceptance of easements for the Waco Airfield plat. Community Partnerships Committee reported that the committee does not recommend the DORA be suspended during the Troy Strawberry Festival. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared to amend the loan application to Four Sons Development LLC. Committee also recommended that legislation be prepared to declare certain items as surplus and recommended legislation be prepared to establish the ARPA fund and any other requirements. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be prepared to accept the dedication of public right-of-way located along the west side of West Market between Fenner Road, Edgewood Drive, and I-75. Committee recommended legislation be prepared vacating a three-foot alley at 121 Public Square Northeast. Committee recommended legislation be prepared vacating a 30-foot public walk on York Lane. Committee also recommended legislation be prepared to increase the authorization of the West Main Street improvement to $9 million, increase the authorization of the West Main Street Duck Bank to $1.5 million, and increase the paving program to $1.115,000. Resolution number R-34, 2022, contract for paving, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-35, 2022, regarding the West Main Street Duck Bank, increasing authorization first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-36, 2022, increasing authorization for the West Main Street Improvement Project was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R-37, 2022, affirming the establishment of the ARPA fund and the use of the fund was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-38, 2022, approving application for mentum enterprises for a loan, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-39, 2022, application of Four Sons Development for loan modification was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number O-16, 2022, a rezoning was given to public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number O-17, 2022, a rezoning of annexed property was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number O-19, 2022, accepting utility and drainage easements for Waco Airfield plat, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-20, 222, dedication of right-of-way for the Harson Investments plat, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-21, 2022, vacating three-foot alley, first reading and adopted. Ordinance O-22, 2022, vacating 30-foot wide public walk was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number O-23, 2022, declaring property a surplus, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-24, 2022, imposing moratorium of 60 days related to demolitions was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-25, 2022, accepting annexation was given first reading and adopted. Following comments, council adjourned at 7:52 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. How's council officials discussing the minutes this evening?
Let's do it first.
Second.
It's been moved to approve the minutes by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to committee reports. We have a number of reports this evening. We'll begin with the Buildings and Utilities Committee and Mrs. Marshall.
All right. On May 9th, committee members Whitten and Marshall met to consider the water treatment plant filter media cleaning project. This is the cleaning of the filters used in the treatment of water. Cleaning will extend the life of the filters and improve performance. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the water treatment plant filter media cleaning process at a cost not to exceed $97,000. Respectfully submitted by Jeffrey Whitten and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Community and Economic Development Committee with two reports and Mr. Schilling.
Thank you. This committee met on May 9th to review the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that the property known as the Blackmore Hill Annexation located on Barnhart Road be rezoned from county zoning of A-2 General Agricultural to the city zoning of AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission regarding this proposed rezoning and recommends that the council adopt the ordinance numbers O-16, 2022, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, please continue.
Thank you. This committee met on May 9th to review the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that the property known as the Ferryman Kerber Annexation be rezoned from the county zoning to a city zoning A... city zoning, I'm sorry. A 2.99 acre parcel in lot 11400 located on Barnhart Road would be rezoned to AR Agricultural Residential District. A 0.717 acre parcel in lot 11401 on Fenner Road would be rezoned to R-2 Single Family Residential District. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission regarding this proposed rezoning and recommends that the council adopt ordinance number 017, 2022, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Community Partnerships Committee and Mr. Rozell for one report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. On May 9th, this committee met to consider recommending and notwithstanding ordinance for a Troy Truck Yard event on Wednesday, June 22nd, which event would include the sale and consumption of beer only on public property. The location is South Cherry Street Parking Lot and adjacent areas of Franklin and Cherry Streets. This would be a city event with the city holding the liquor license. It is the recommendation of this committee that the notwithstanding legislation be prepared authorizing the sale and consumption of alcohol beverages on the public property for the Troy Truck Yard event planned for June 22nd. So that the liquor permit application can be submitted, this committee supports emergency legislation. This is respectfully submitted by Jeffrey A. Schilling, Todd D. Severt, and myself, William G. Rozell as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, move on to Streets and Sidewalks Committee for two reports this evening and Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on May 9th regarding bidding of the Phase 14 of the sidewalk improvement program to replace raised, cracked, or otherwise dangerous sidewalks. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the 2022 sidewalk repair program Phase 14 at a cost not to exceed $300,000, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any comments or questions? Mr. Phillips, please move on.
We also heard on May 9th the staff report to consider legislation needed regarding easements within the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project Phase 2, and it is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared as follows regarding the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project Phase 2. Number one, to authorize the Park... excuse me, the Board of Park Commissioners to execute easements and related documents regarding park board property within the project area. And two, authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to accept the project easements and execute related documents. So that there is no delay in executing the documents on behalf of the city, the committee does support emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any final comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, move on to an oral report for liquor permits given by the Law and Ordinance Committee and Mr. Severt this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city has received notice of two new liquor permit applications, both for D-2 permits. Speak Easy Ramen LLC, 101 West Main Street, and Casey's General Store, 1403 West Market Street. The Police Department has advised there is no basis of objection for either permit.
Thank you, Mr. Severt. Are there any comments or questions on these requests? Seeing none, move on to citizen comments for items on the agenda. We have two resolutions and four ordinances for discussion this evening. If you wish to address council on any of those items, you're more than welcome to come to the podium, give your name and address. You have two minutes to address council, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Seeing none, move on to resolutions. It's been asked Mrs. Knight to read the first resolution of the evening, Resolution R-40, 2022.
Resolution number R-40, 2022, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for Phase 14 of the sidewalk repair program. This is at a cost not to exceed $300,000 for the annual program. First reading.
We have been asked to have this hold over for a second reading, so we will have this a second reading at our next meeting. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the next resolution for you.
Resolution number R-41, 2022, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the water treatment plant filter media cleaning project, cost not to exceed $97,000. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the first ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-16, 2022.
Ordinance number O-16, 2022, an ordinance changing the zoning of in lots 11465 and 11466 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from Miami County zoning of A-2 General Agriculture to the city zoning of AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District. This is as recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. It should apply a city zoning to the Blackmore Hill Annexation. This is the third reading.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Are there any final comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Would you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-17, 2022.
Ordinance number O-17, 2022, an ordinance changing the zoning of in lot 11400 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from Miami County zoning of A-2 General Agriculture to the city zoning of AR Agricultural Residential District, and changing the zoning of in lot 11401 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from Miami County zoning of R-1 AAA, One Family Residential, to the city zoning of R-2 Single Family Residence District. This is recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. It should apply a city zoning to the Ferryman Kerber Annexation, and this is the third reading.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Will you excuse me, the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-26, 2022.
Ordinance number O-26, 2022, ordinance accepting easements associated with the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project Phase 2, and authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners to grant easements for the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project Phase 2, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Severt. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the last ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-27, 2022.
Ordinance number O-27, 2022, ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for the Troy Truck Yard Event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy codified ordinances, and further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer, subject to the issuance of proper permits by the state of Ohio and declaring an emergency. The Truck Yard Event is scheduled to be held June 22, 2022. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes. Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Severt. Are there any final comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist.
No.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We'll move on to communications and announcements.
No, sir. None.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to comments of officials, mayor.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tiffrington.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will pick up the slack. I have three items for you tonight. First of all, the 30th is Memorial Day. We are closed at City Hall. However, trash and recycling will be on schedule, normal schedule. The second in your packet, under the items of interest, you have our bi-monthly DORA update. There was one typo. We did get 15 businesses providing feedback, and not 30 businesses talking about no increase in trash, but 13 businesses. That was a typo. Then the final thing, we will be sending out a press release and on social media regarding the recently reported planned increase by AES of electric supply rates. For those who are in our residential and small business aggregation program, that increase reported by AES is on the supply side. There's no, at this point, no change in the distribution portion of the bill. Our supply contract is with Energy Harbor if you are... if you were opted into the city's program, and so you will not see any increase in rate. Now, if your utilization changes, you could see an increase in your bill, but that's based on utilization, not on the kilowatt rate for supply. If anybody has a question as to whether or not they are in the program, they can call the Human Resources Department downstairs, and they will answer any questions that they can or guide you in the right place to get those questions answered. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tiffrington. Moving on, Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. Do any council members have any comments that they'd like to make at this time? Seeing none, are there any staff members in the audience that have any comments that they'd like to make? I have the understanding that we have some visitors this evening from Leadership Troy. If you would like to just stand, give your name, and one fun fact we should know about you, we would be greatly appreciative. Don't... there we go.
I'm Katie, and I am excited to be part of the activities on Wednesday, and I work in the library.
All right. Thank you, Katie.
I'm Blaine Guy. It's just a name and fun fact, right?
Yes.
Fun fact, my fun fact is if we get out early, I'll get home to help with bedtime for free.
We'll do that. Thanks, Blaine.
I'm Shelby Chady. I really don't have a fun fact, so I feel happy to know me, so...
Let the record show that Shelby's no farmer.
I'm Emily Reinhart. I work at US Bank. My fun fact is that I coach high school cheerleading, and we have travels this week.
Great, great.
I'm Cindy Hale. I'm the treasurer of Miami County ESC, and my fun fact is I apparently will be the park superintendent on Wednesday. Yay!
Dave Larson, Deja, the superintendent of Miami County ESC, and I'm a religious gentleman.
Okay. Yeah.
Wow! There's two more.
There's two more. Two more.
Can we let the people or what?
Yes. One all the way in the bag.
We can call you or you can do it all.
There we go.
I'm Zach Mupper. We have... we've had to play your roles this week in Leadership Troy, and somebody decided to play a little joke, and I'm going to be Chief Simmons.
One Salome.
One Salome.
Salome, I'm a city of Troy, so I'm excited to be part of Leadership Troy this year. It's a very exciting class, and we've been having fun and learning a lot about our community, so I'm happy to be part of this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Who would you be?
Oh, I would be a servant of the Lord.
Okay.
That's the short of it, Mr. ...
Well, thank you all for participating. We wish you well in your further endeavors. Go to the audience participation portion of the night. If you wish to address council on any topic, please come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
My name is Deb Hogshead. I live at 421 South Plum. I'm a volunteer with Move to amend Miami County, Ohio, an affiliate of a national, nonpartisan, nonprofit coalition seeking a 28th amendment to the U.S. Constitution. The U.S. Supreme Court does not always get things right. Last Tuesday, May 10, marked the 136th anniversary of the Supreme Court's 1886 decision in Santa Clara County versus Southern Pacific Railroad. The summary of that decision indicated that the railroad, a state-chartered entity, had 14th Amendment rights to equal protection even though the 14th Amendment had been written exclusively to extend liberties and rights to formerly enslaved people. That summary, while not part of the decision, has been used over and over by the Supreme Court as precedents to give constitutional rights to non-persons. Corporations play an important role in society. They need and already have statutory privileges and protections from government overreach. But as state-chartered entities, corporations are not natural persons. They cannot vote. They cannot run for office and sit on Troy's City Council. They do not go to church and sing hymns. They do not have a conscience, and they cannot be sent to prison or executed for crimes committed against people or the environment. Corporations are not people. They should not have constitutional rights. In Congress, the proposed We the People Amendment, House Joint Resolution 48, will make clear that constitutional rights belong to natural persons only and that money spent to fund campaigns shall be regulated. In Ohio, 27 communities have passed either resolutions or ballot initiatives in support of this proposed amendment. Our group would like to see Troy become the 28th Ohio City to support a 28th Amendment to the Constitution. As part of our effort to educate local leaders and residents, I'm going to leave you with information that further explains the need for the We the People Amendment.
I have one for a reporter. There's probably a reporter here today.
No.
Yeah, if you can just give those to Mrs. Knight, she'll pass them down.
One of my fellow volunteers will be speaking as well, but do you have any questions for me at this time? Okay, well, I thank you for your attention. This is a very important issue, and it does affect all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for attending this evening.
Hello, everyone. My comments will both support-
Do we have your name and address?
Yes, yes. Excuse me. My name is DeeDee Wisman. I live at 2503 Renwick Way here in Troy. I will expand and support what my colleague Deb said, as I am a volunteer with Move to Amend Miami County, Ohio, an affiliate of a national nonpartisan nonprofit coalition seeking a 28th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Again, corporations are not people. They should not have constitutional rights. Yet repeatedly over the years, the Supreme Court has granted them constitutional protections provided by the 14th, the 5th, the 4th, and 1st Amendments, which were written to protect you and me. This includes equal protection, due process, protection from random searches, free speech, and regulation of interstate commerce. Why should you and Troy citizens care about these Supreme Court decisions? We should care because philosophically and morally, it's wrong for state-chartered entities such as corporations to be on an equal footing with natural persons, let alone have more power than voters. Yet they do have more power. We should care because historically, our ancestors fought a revolution to throw off the yoke of King George III's chartered companies. Here in Ohio, in our earliest years as a state, we believed corporations should be time-limited, serve a single purpose that benefited the community, and expect to have their charters revoked if they betrayed the public trust. Self-interest is another reason to care. Large corporations have the money to sue a municipality over a decision they believe violates their current constitutional rights. Basically, that is usurping local control. While that may not have happened yet in Troy, it certainly could. Corporations also spend millions of dollars to influence elections and public policies that affect the daily lives of Troy's citizens. Everything from livable wages to affordable housing, to the availability and cost of health care and prescription drugs, to the quality of our air and water, to the plastic that litters our city streets and the great Miami River, virtually everything. Citizens who are concerned about the overreach of large corporations and the influence of money and politics can join us, Move to Amend Miami County, Ohio, and support House Joint Resolution 48, the We the People Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions from council members? Seeing none, thank you for the information.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address counsel this evening on any topic? Seeing none, we'll adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting will be Monday, June 6, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Have a pleasant evening, everyone. Thank you for attending.